State City Council Meeting, roll call, Donna.
Mayor Borowski?
Here.
Member Meery?
Here.
Member Burns?
Here.
Member Tucker?
Present.
Member Baker?
Yes, ma'am.
Member Gifford?
Here.
Member Lynn?
Here.
City Administrator Giffen?
Here.
City Attorney Edge?
Here.
All rise for praying, like the legion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. The only thing I got on my report is that Kenny Meyer will speak about the Dayton Harry, Dayton Museum.
Clark Dayton Harry.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in May, we had a meeting, Anthony and Mr. Edge, and we talked about initiating an ordinance to become an official board of the city. And we thought maybe we would just address the council to try to move that process forward since we have the opportunity to do some, apply for some grants that would help the museum. So I just wanted to maybe address the city council and hope that we could do that, move that ordinance forward. That's it.
Would the city council like an ordinance draw up to make them a 501(c) three?
Yeah, 501(c)(3). Jeff Fisher had started that process.
What they'll need to do is they'll just need an ordinance that makes them a board and gives them the power to incorporate. And it's at that point then they can draw, then we can draw them a 501(c)(3) papers.
So the city board can be a 501(c)(3).
If they have the power to incorporate in their charter, in that ordinance.
Similar to the Main Street Board.
I believe they do have a power of incorporation in that particular board.
Right. May I make the motion to draw up the ordinance?
Motion by Giffen.
Second.
To make the museum board an official board of the city.
I need a second.
Second.
Second by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The order. Next on the agenda is the city administrator's report.
First, I've got one handicap parking request. It's for 704 Fifth Street. The applicant meets all the requirements. I would make a recommendation to the city council to approve handicap spot for 704 Fifth Street.
Second by Danny, second by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The order.
Second thing I have is a special event request. This comes from Infiltrate Ministries, Brian Spradman in particular. I'd like to do a back-to-school block party down here at the end of Clay Street on August 8th, 2015. The event setup time will be from 8:00 to 10:00, and then the actual event is from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with cleanup and out after work, so everything will be over with at 3:00 p.m. Talked to Jay Brewer about this, because obviously it's a back-to-school event and the school's involved with it. He doesn't have any problems with it. All that I ask is that Brian is coordinating with the city to make sure that the city and fire and police to make sure that all emergency access points are maintained. Other than that, I don't have a problem with it, so I would recommend the city council to approve the special event application for Infiltrate Ministries.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion by Gary, second by Danny. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The order.
Next thing on my agenda, I want to update everybody on the KZF Pier and Riverfront Commons Comprehensive Plan. This was a plan that the city council approved funding for back in the fall, and that we had started with KZF here this year. It's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated, only to the fact that they could only get so far before they needed more information from the Army Corps of Engineers. As you can imagine, with the wet spring that we had, and even the wet summer that they've been, they've been busy with flooding all over the, all over the state and region. So they were a little bit slow to get back to us. That put a little bit of a delay on it. In the interim, South Bank stepped up and offered to fully fund that project. So the 21,000 that the city council had initially voted to go towards the project is actually going to be reversed by South Bank, so I want to thank them again for that initiative. But about 50 percent done with the plan. Now that KZF has the information they need from the Corps, we're hoping to wrap that up in the next couple of months. There may be another public hearing for input and review again. So just keep on the lookout for the, on the Dayton Facebook page and on the website as well. We'll make sure we get the board after that. So just wanted to give everybody update on that. Last thing I have, Mayor, there's been substantial work done on Dayton Pike over the last couple of weeks with water main replacements and some unexpected issues that came up during that replacement. We're working on getting the street fixed and repaved. The company, the subcontractor that's going to do some of the substantial work to fix those issues is looking to do that on Monday. Obviously, it's weather permitting, so again, be sure to check the city website and Facebook page. We're going to post what we know 100 percent for sure if that's when they're going to do it. Right now, that's what we're shooting for. That portion will be closed down for at least a day, maybe a day and a half. Obviously, those that live in that general area, that 200-foot area, will still have access, but just want to let everybody know that we have substantial problems that came up that we're looking to fix. So right now, as I said, Monday's the date we're shooting for, so just be aware of that going forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you. City attorneys' report.
Your Honor, it looks like on my agenda, I've got on here a memorandum and an understanding with the Northern Kentucky Area Development District, Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. I've reviewed that contract. This contract is sent to every city and county government in the Northern Kentucky area to sign in accordance with the development district, and that's so that way they can get some federal grants to do more mitigation planning. I would ask that yes for a vote to approve and allow you to enter into that agreement from the city of Dayton.
Do we have a copy of the agreement?
Yes, there was a copy. It was right after the last council meeting that I gave everybody a copy in the month.
And that's the final version of it.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the regional hazard mitigation plan. Motion by the city attorney. Motion by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Joey. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The order. I have no other. Consent agenda of the approval of July 7th council meeting. Get a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda, last council meeting.
Motion by Gary.
Second.
There's some changes. Second. Second by Bill. All in favor?
I would like to also submit this as a matter of public record. I gave, this is that traffic study I did, and I gave all the members of council a copy of this, and I didn't know if it should go into a matter of public record since it was discussed that evening.
Okay.
I'll get it to Donna in the next minute.
You oppose or did I just comment?
I just comment, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The order. Ordinance and orders, second reading of 2015, correction to unintentional clerical error.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2015 number seven. An ordinance correcting two unintentional clerical errors on the amounts charged under the Dayton Code of Ordinances 110.13. This ordinance amends Dayton Code of Ordinances 110.13d, which sets the rate for rental property license tax to a correct amount of .01 times grocery receipts or $50 per year, whichever is greater. This change is made as a result of clerical error in drafting ordinance 2014 number 11, and that is second read.
Need a motion? Make a motion to adopt 2015-7. Motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by Ben. All vote on it.
Member Gifford?
Hi.
Member Lynn?
Hi.
Member Meery?
Hi.
Member Burns?
Hi.
Member Tucker?
Hi.
Member Baker?
All right.
So Gary. Department head, Donna.
I don't have anything. Everybody has a copy of financial reports. And Tiffany Myers, my assistant, she did just come back from a week at school in Lexington, so she's working on becoming a Northern Kentucky municipal clerk. It'll take two more years, but she did finish her first year of school.
Minister vice got a copy of the violation report to listen out for the month. Anybody has any questions?
I have a quick question concerning the property 307 Walnut. Is the owner a bit aggressive with any type of issues that may be bringing that from around the status or where are we on that?
I've met with him multiple times. He does have an order to repair. He is working on it now. Still working on it.
I have a resident who's pretty concerned about that, and I want to make sure that if we're there that it's, you know, they're up to code.
It is not as bad as what's coming across. The most of the stuff that's there is cosmetic repairs.
Okay.
What is the status on the burnout on Upper 7th Avenue, about the 1,000 block? That's been burned out, I think, like two years. I was up there to, up and up block today, and the high grass all around that areas, and I don't see that listed on here.
They haven't permitted through the county as far as repairs go. As far as high grass and weeds, if they've not hit it, we'll get it.
Okay. Thank you. What about the burnout on Urban Terrace?
I had somebody also ask about that. I know the lady's in the military, but are we addressing that or?
We are. We're in the process of trying to get that.
Do we have an ETA on what we have? Because that's kind of nice work, but not to mention a hazard for the community, for the children.
We've been working along with the town.
We're working with the county on that. We're waiting for a letter to come back from the county. For that time, then we'll be able to take it down. We're waiting for the county letter to come through.
Is there an ETA I can give the resident?
I think that we're looking at the letter coming back, what, within the next week?
I would think.
Next week.
So within a month? By next session, we'll be able to?
Yeah, we'll go to session, Terry, just waiting to go. So the track of the airport, that's where it's.
That's the track of the airport?
That's where it's at.
Okay.
Okay. So that's where we are, but we're just, we want to make sure we specialize in the north side of the city.
All right. Appreciate their service. Just want to make sure we're taking care of our neighbors.
Thank you. Sergeant Baldwin?
No report.
Chief, or Chief Audrey?
Hey, my report, if anyone noticed, fire training and emergency training for last month. I'm also a smoke program. Just a couple things I want to highlight that was in my report. Fire Department did have a meeting July 1st at the fire station. Well, we're going to have another one this month on the 19th at the Station 6. We were also able to put our new divulators in service. We have one on the medic unit, one on the engine. There's one service on the 24th. Thanks again. On the 15th and 29th, Fireman Joe and the firefighters did get down to Lincoln School Camp Program and assisted during days. It's happening really well. Our department hosted the Cincinnati Area Marine Committee meeting on the 23rd at the Holiday Express in Bellevue. Really good meeting. I did attach the agenda onto that packet, so instead of writing on that, attach the agenda to that, so you can preview that. The only thing I want to hit on on the 24th is Unit 1, Captain Israel Schiff, 3:30, 6:00 a.m. Our apartment with Cincinnati responded to the Ohio River up towards Fort Thomas toward a boat that was sinking, so 35-foot Don's Eye. So if anybody's missing that boat, it's a pretty big boat. Middle of the night, two were able to swim to land, three to 7 o'clock bridge. Our boat, Cincinnati, responded, arrived around the same time we were able to get to out of water, and Cincinnati was able to get to, because we were four rescues that night. So that was a, that was a good night for, they have our boat out there in service. And other than that, I'm unable to lie on my report. If there's anything else in my report, any questions or?
Council, any questions? Anthony, David?
Council member should have received my report for the CCAP. If you guys have any questions, if you haven't answered us now. Other than that, I have nothing further to report for Main Street apartment. However, I do have an introduction. Richard Zoomwald is the owner and executive chef of the soon-to-open Purple Pule, and I just wanted to give him a chance to come and introduce himself and say, have everybody, allow them to say welcome, so.
Thank you, Anthony. My friends call me Rick, by the way, so everyone can call me Rick. We'll be opening up a new restaurant in your town here soon called Purple Pule. It's French for purple chicken. It's going to be a little bistro-type place, about 60 seats approximately. There'll be a small bar in there, we'll have some bourbon-inspired items, a lot of chicken items on the menu. There'll be beef and seafood and a little bit of everything, sandwiches, a lot of appetizers. So we're looking forward to getting this open, and we're shooting right now for about the end of September. We really want to be going by the first of October, so we're pushing for that right now. 603 on 6th Avenue. Kind of a, little bit of a funny story getting the whole thing started. I was actually looking at the next town over, and I was walking down the street one day and got Shanghai by Joe Meery over here, directed me down this way, so. So Anthony, it's been a great job of me working through things with different programs and everything, too. So if anyone sees me out and about and has any questions, I'd be happy to answer questions on what we're doing and what we intend to do, and we're going to go from there.
Thank you.
What we did.
Thank you.
I stopped in Friday to visit with Rick, and the progress they've made on the inside of that's amazing. It's going to be a really, really nice spot. So I'm looking forward to you guys opening before the Home Fest.
We're shooting for that. That's our goal.
Before I let it go, I do have one more announcement.
Say it.
Going through my timeline here. Kate's Catering will be opening probably next week. We've got to get a few more things that she wants to make sure before we give an official date, but within this month, she'll definitely be opening as well, so. It's two food-based industries that are coming in Dayton, so we're pretty excited about that.
Anthony, you have on your report that four applications were approved, and you've only got three listed down there.
Have you noticed Kate's Catering is two applications for signage and structural proof?
Understood. Thank you. What project is being completed?
The signage for Kate's Catering?
Oh.
Yeah, since she's, had the sign and it's installed, I consider that completely.
And to anybody that's concerned about painting over the mosaic that was there that's actually an applique, like you would put on a vehicle?
I think it's beautiful.
Yeah. It really looks nice, but in case anybody wants to buy the mosaic underneath still, she could peel that off and sell it to you.
Any communications, Donna? Finance? Member Lynn?
No report.
Public Works?
Member Gifford? No report this time.
Public Works, member Byrne?
No report, sir.
Parks and Real Estate, member Tucker?
I just want to report that all baseball is done for the year. Kim Sparks and the Hometown Sluggers had their event last week. It was a fundraiser, softball tournament. Everything went great. I stopped down and seemed like everybody had a great time, and they made some money for the kids. Football is running, both high school and youth football at the park now. We have the concessions open starting next week with the school coming back in. We'll be 6:00 to 8:00 every evening. Our normal days are Tuesday, Thursday, so we'll have concessions if anybody wants to stop down. And then, last thing is, last night's park meeting was canceled, but they moved it to August 17th at 6:00 p.m. If anybody liked to attend.
And that will be.
Yes. And that is at the VFW. That's all I have.
Thank you. Personnel law and printing, member Meery?
On personnel, personnel issue just come to my attention. I'd like to discuss it in an executive session tonight. On law, I have a point that'll bring up the new business. And in printing, wanted to get an update from Michael on the online Blifor Coke enforcement form that we have been requesting. If you can give us an update on that.
I'm going to refer that to our IT genius, Tom Edg. What happened is that me and Councilmember Baker have been working on making sure that we've got the space and make sure that the protocols from the website have been upright. I think we've got that fixed, but we also have an issue with the space constraints, so we're kind of trying to solve the two problems at once now with it, so hopefully we'll have that going here pretty quickly for you.
Hopefully by the next meeting?
I'm hopeful.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Economic Development, member Baker?
Nothing to report today, sir.
Any petitions?
The only thing I do want to ask about is, Michael, this may be best directed towards you, is the progress with any type of repair to the roads up on Urban Terrace?
Yeah, so, and I think storms, those two storms that came through did one of the nails to Urban Terrace. The problem with that street is Duke Energy has done a lot of repairs over the last couple of years, and the repairs have fallen in, obviously, and the road started buckling. So we've met up there with them. They are going to assess the damage, what it's going to cost to fix. They're supposed to be getting back at me, so it's a top priority, but, oh, I'm sorry, Water Company.
Sorry, FD1?
No, I'm sorry. The Water.
KWD.
Sorry. Sorry, you do get it. We've met up there several times. It's a top priority of ours. They're aware of it, they've assessed the damage, and they should be getting to us back to us very soon on a plan to fix the road.
I know, I think a lot of us have heard a lot of citizens complain about that. Do we have an idea on how long that's going to take before we can get there?
It'll just be contingent on them getting back to us with a plan, and then whoever they decide to sub the work out to. I know a lot of paving companies are busy right now. We're dealing with the same thing. On Dayton Pike, we have the ability and a contractor to get in and fix the subservice problem, but repaving, actually getting a professional repaving job in weeks, two months later. So it's, we're at that rate of urgency.
I think you're looking at more.
More?
I think you're looking at more.
I hate to see that go into the winter time when we have shovels and.
The thing with it is, they said they may have changed that whole line up there.
Yeah.
And if they're going to do that, they're going to have subcontractors come and do that before they want to pay it.
What's the cost to the city on all this?
We're writing down nothing, and we expect to not pay anything for it. It's an underlying issue. As you can see, there's patchwork down all up that street, so they've done repairs over the years, and we've had countless water breaks over the years that's continued to add to the problem of the body of the road. So it's, it's a long-term problem, but it kind of reared its ugly head with those storms that we had. As a top priority, it's just, they're the ones that are having to get the repairs, so they're the ones that are kind of spearheading the effort. But we're staying on them. I'm constantly on the phone with them every other day or so, as well as them with the Dayton Pike project, so we're, kind of on speed dial right now. We're becoming close friends.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Michael, once again, I'm going to ask you, Rick, somebody needs to monitor the Water Department on the lines they're replacing. I guess, I just drove down 7th Street yesterday, and it looked like a war zone. They dumped their sand wherever they want to dump it. They had two and three and four pieces of equipment. It's disgusting how they're treating our city. So if you could monitor it a little bit, I'm not trying to get down on the Water Department because they got problems, but our town is no worse than anybody else, and we need to get our fair share. So you monitor that for me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And along those lines, I've gotten quite a few citizen complaints about the 194 Dayton Pike, where they're storing all their equipment and debris and everything else. That's a residential zone. That should have never been permitted. Who approved that permit? Did it go through Board of Adjustments?
No, that goes through Campbell County, and they're a public, for a public cause. So Campbell County granted a permit in that instance because it's a short-term permit to allow them to stay here around there. It's the benefit of the public for them to get in and out as quickly as possible. So in order for them to get in and out as quickly as possible, it helps that they can have their equipment staged close to the project. So that's why that, because it was a public entity, public benefit to have that street paved and repaired as quickly as possible, they granted a temporary permit for that.
And they could do that in R1(c)? I mean, my house is in an R1(c).
Sure. They could do it in any zone to help, you know, improve public infrastructure.
My concern mostly is not just the debris on the road and the impact on the neighborhood, the property values. There's also a major storm line going underneath there, and they're storing some really heavy equipment on that lot. If that were to collapse that storm line, who's responsible for that?
They would be responsible, just as well as they're responsible for fully cleaning it up when they're finished, and making any repairs to a damaged portion of the road, public way that were done.
Okay.
And that was brought to their attention when they were granted the temporary permit. I've gotten a lot of calls on that, and it is a temporary nuisance. I totally agree. But it was to help expedite the process to get them in and out as quickly as possible.
Understood. And the county can permit it, which does not require any city approval by any board or council, correct?
They're basically an extension of our office. We contract with the county to do that type of permitting, so they have.
So it's county P&amp;Z.
So they have the jurisdiction to make that call.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more petitions from council?
Are there, and I've been approached by a couple of different people, and I feel the same way, that, you know, this Home Fest is coming up in eight weeks. We need to spruce up the city itself because a lot of people are going to be looking at a lot of other properties in town. And I don't know, between Anthony and Michael and Public Works, is there any plan to put out flags on Main Street, on the 6th Avenue, or any kind of real estate open house for the residents, you know, all these buildings that we have available in the city? I mean, Manhattan Harbor's going to sell Manhattan Harbor. We're trying to sell the rest of the city here.
I'm currently in contact with one of the listing agents down at Manhattan Harbor. I'm wanting to try and aim for an open house, like an open house day during the Home Fest. Obviously, we have our Fall Fest October 3rd, which I think falls in line with one of the weekends there as well.
And the kite fest on the 10th.
Yeah. So those are the things that I'm working on. Obviously, I can't tell Realtors where to be and what time.
Understood.
I don't have that control. But if it's something that they all agree to do, if I can get in touch with Northern Kentucky Realtors, if the listing agents at Manhattan Harbor say it's okay, I just don't want to step on their toes and start going to two different, you know, 100 different programs at once. As far as flags and decorating and landscaping goes, there's no solidified plan for that at all.
Would it be possible, Mr. Mayor, to get the flags up for a couple of weeks?
I mean, there's.
Or anything, because that's all the banners and everything going.
We get the flag from the VFW. We borrow them. We asked them, last time when Bill wanted them up for the 4th of July, I asked Michael, who asked Rick, and he went to the VFW and asked if we could use them, and they said yes. I mean, we can go to them and ask them if they will put them up for a couple of weeks.
That would be nice.
Just to spruce up the avenue a bit.
Mayor, also, I'd like to, I brought this up before, and being the Home Fest is coming up, there's some concrete on O'Fallon. As you drive in to the Home Fest place, they took the sidewalk out or whatever they did, and they've got, they've got mulch there now, and it just, to me, it just looks tacky. If you're driving into Megan Dollar Homes, we need to dress that area. And I don't know if that's the city's fault or if it's the developer, but, and also, Anthony, could you ask that developer to clean that? That's the developer, and we'll talk to the developer. Okay. And clean that, where the trees are, just clean, because that's just going to sell that, too.
Yeah, they, they, they've had a couple meetings about what they're going to do for that entrance.
Very good.
I'll make sure to bring that, the first point up.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing that I think is pretty pertinent tonight. I'd like for the city attorney to clarify the guidelines pertaining to executive sessions, what can be discussed between ourselves and outside of ourselves as a result of the executive. I'm new to this, and I just want to have a very clear.
What are you thinking of discussing in executive session?
Here's the items that you can discuss in an executive session. Deliberations for decisions of the Kentucky parole board. B, deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property of a, by a public agency, but only when that property would likely be affected, affect the value of specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by a public agency. Discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency. Grand and petty jury sessions. Collective bargaining negotiations between public employers and their employees and their respective representatives. Discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student without restricting that employee, member, or student's right to a public hearing if requested. This particular exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of a general personnel matters in secret. Discussion between a public agency and a representative of a business entity, and discussions concerning a specific proposal, if open discussions. concerning a specific proposal, if open discussions would jeopardize a sitting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business. State and local cabinet meetings and executive cabinet meetings. Committees of the General Assembly other than standing committees. Deliberations of judicial or quasi-judicial bodies regarding individual adjudications or appointments at which neither the person involved, his representatives, nor any other individual, not a member of the agency's government body, or a staff, is present, but not including any meeting of the Planning Commission, Zoning Commission, or Board of Adjustments. Meetings which federal or state law specifically require to be conducted in privacy. Meetings which the Constitution provides shall be held in secret. And that's it.
What can be said, obviously, I mean, I have a lot of people asking me questions. What can I, or can, what can or can't I discuss what was discussed in an executive session? The vote is a matter of public record.
The votes are a matter of public record, but the discussions in an executive session are for the purpose that they are held in secret for the public for a variety of reasons there. Hence, anything that's said in those sessions should not be discussed with the public.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we're going to that, then. It said on personnel matters, only if it's a dismissal?
Only if it's, it must be something about a particular individual, and whether it's an appointment, discipline, or dismissal. It shall not be interpreted to discuss general personnel matters in secret. So if it's just a general, all these employees are affected a certain way, that must be discussed openly. Now, if we're talking about a specific person or a specific appointment, then that can be talked about in secret.
If you were talking about personnel when you're talking executive session, does your fall under executive session, or does it fall under?
I guess since, I'm not sure on that. We can discuss it in an executive session, and then when we come back out of executive session, if it needs to be, if he deems that it's public, we can. I think that would be safest at this point.
Okay. Anyone else have any petition? Anybody in the audience have anything? Any petition? Hit that one.
My first question tonight would be, came to Michael. I looked through the budget, and I saw that there was $161,200 in there for the safe school sidewalk grant. But I think we might have talked about this before, but I'm not sure. I just want to clarify this. There is no timeframe for which we could lose that money if we don't use it.
We could certainly lose it, but that's not the case right now. I'm in close contact with the Department of Transportation, so they know that we still intend to use the grant. They fully intend to relinquish the funds to us. We've just told them we're not ready yet, which we're not, but we're close. But, so we're not in danger of losing that, that's for sure.
That is my concern.
Yep.
The other thing is, is there any status report on the park issue of Dayton Pike?
I reached out to the Department of Local Government last week, as we had intended or expected to hear something by mid to late July. Obviously, at this point, I haven't heard anything. Department of Local Government say it could come any day now and ask how it would handle us, and I guess the National Park Service will contact them first, and they'll be contacted. So at this moment, we're still in a holding pattern, but we expect anything really to be done.
Also, and this is just generally for the whole council, the mayor, and the manager, just looking at the budget as a whole, it appears that expenditures at this point in time outweigh revenues significantly. So I was wondering if there's any anticipation of any new revenue streams within the next several years that might be coming in to the city to help buffer that issue?
At this moment, we, yeah, obviously, we sold the marina last year. That money went into economic development. As far as money coming into the general fund, there's very few means in which to do that. Obviously, taxes are the main one. But at this point, I don't foresee any major revenue coming in other than development that goes on in the river. But as most of you are, some of y'all may know, for a certain portion, we only get a certain percentage of that because the majority of it goes to pay for the tenant. But we still will see some increases from that. It just won't be as substantial as it will be in the future.
I guess my concern is that if the other issue then is finding cuts over the next several years, because if not, I mean, there's going to come a point in time where that surplus is going to be gone, and there are going to be painful cuts to make at some point in time if we can't get a handle on that. So that was just a point that I thought needed to be made. You know, it looks like there are some areas in the budget that are underfunded. I mean, due to what's coming down the Pike, I'm almost certain city legal expenses are going to escalate over the next several months. And it looks like some of those revenue streams, I mean, aren't there according to everybody sitting here. There are some things that will not be reoccurring in the budget, like filth layers, which was a big expense for the fire department, some other issues. But just food for thought.
Thank you.
I'm actually looking for answers. I was sent to this meeting, but my name's Samantha Nowes. I've been at Dayton Pike for 17 years, and I would like to bring adult activities back into Gately Park, and we're looking forward to starting by next year. I have talked to people, and they brought up volleyball, softball leagues, and even basketball leagues or tournaments. But the one item most adults would like is the choice to have alcohol, mainly beer, in the park during these events. Bringing, that I am a youth league coach, I understand days and fields are being used for the youth, and that would be, sales would be limited to certain areas and certain days. I'm just asking the council what steps or actions I need to start to get it passed to bring alcohol sales back into Gately Park.
At the moment, there are certain events that are allowed to have alcohol. Case in point, we had one two weekends ago. Without the ordinance in front of me, I don't know all the laws that prohibit, or that allow it. But I know church organizations and volunteer organizations, if the proceeds that are made from the sale of alcohol goes to funding youth organizations. Those are the two that I know off the top of my head. I think there's another one or two. So it is allowed, but it's only allowed under certain conditions.
Yeah, and that's one step we're trying to look into, because I was actually part of the co-ed, the softball tournament, a couple, the other, a couple weeks ago, and they can only do a one-day one. So we're looking to see, like, if we do a Friday night, because as of right now, youth league don't have the park during Fridays. So if we do a Friday night softball co-ed league or something, if we can have, like, Fridays alcohol sales maybe? Or like, what's the steps I need to go to introduce them?
First of all, any licenses you get, a temporary license is a three-day license from the state. There's no one-day license. There's a three-day license, that's it.
I always just thought it was one day.
She probably had it for one day, but it's a three-day license.
Okay.
And if I'm correct, if I'm wrong with the events that they used to do down there, the Music Fest was an multi, multiple day event, and they sold alcohol all three days?
What I understand is only certain, certain, like, you only get a limited amount of alcohol usage at the park nowadays.
No.
That's...
I think the bigger question would be reoccurring. If it's a league, obviously, I'm thinking you'd want to go every week.
For like a summer or spring?
Yeah, yeah. So that, I think that would be, is that what you're trying to?
Yes, for the leagues.
Because obviously, the events that we're going right now, or that was done, was, you know, a couple consecutive days.
The ordinance would have to be changed to do that. I mean, the way the ordinance reads right now, you cannot go every weekend and get a license, a three-day license. You'd have to have a regular license.
And how would we go, are there ways to get that, or?
Well, it has to be, it's owned by the city, so the city would have to get the license. And that's where, why we don't have here in the park now because of that. Council voted it out a while back. Council would have to change the ordinance, put it back in there. And then they have, they would have to own the liquor license, or the beer license, whatever you want to call it. They would have to own it, the city would have to own it.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
This is mainly for you. I reside at 11166th Ave., and there's a maintenance road behind a, an access alley behind my house, and my, there's only a few of us really affected by this, but the road has been in kind of disrepair. It's, I guess, passable for fire equipment, but it's gotten really rough on passenger vehicles. It's ruddy. And the main, the main concern is the amount of erosion and water that comes down. I happen to be at the lowest point on the property, so my driveway is a, is a, you know, funnel, right? It's a, comes right down like a river right there. With all the, of course, this year's been especially bad. But I've owned the property for two years, and it's, it's been bad all along. Both my neighbor and I have had to do muscle repairs recently. But my main concern is the, is the water, the amount of erosion it causes along that alley. And, of course, I, you know, I talked to you, Michael, about this, so I just wanted to make, just make it public to everybody that, you know, we'd like to have that addressed in some way. And I'm not exactly sure what all it involves. I know enough about construction and roads to know that, you know, to really do it right, that would be a pretty expensive project. Because there's no catch basin, there's no, there's no real water collection system up there. But it is a city property, and it has to be addressed. I mean, it's, you know, it's not enough, as a former firefighter, I know that I could get a fire truck with a lot of clearance and power down that road, but my little passenger car is rough on it. So if there's any...
Is that a through street, or is that?
It's a through street.
Or is it an access, what I understood it to be was an access for emergency vehicles?
It's an access for emergency vehicles, yes. To my understanding, it goes through, it goes, it goes through from 7th to Benson.
Yeah, so that you get the ammo for the fire trucks you get behind there in case the trains coming.
Right, right. But as city property, it has to be maintained for runoff. If not, you know, I mean, you know, I understand you can say, wow, it's really for the trucks, you know, and it's not for vehicles. I, a bunch of us, well, there's a couple of us have drivers off of that. They were there when we had it. But the fact is, what I'm, my real concern is, is the water erosion. And that, it's city property, and it's, it's not being maintained properly for water runoff.
Why don't you give us a month to look at it, come back next month, and we'll have you an answer? Because I'm, I know that roughly, but I don't know exactly. Let's get Rick up there and Michael, and then councilman, we'll look at it, and we'll get a better idea of what, how to address your...
I'm sorry, what was the address again?
I, I live at 11166th Ave.
Okay, so it's 111...
I know my neighbor, 1118.
Come off 7th and go down.
Or Benson.
Okay.
There's a bunch of us have access to, you know, to that.
Does that work?
Yeah.
And Mike, I'll trick. A lot of times the railroad, at least before I left, they would never block any intersection because we made them, they had to keep one lane open for us to get through, because that access road is not even really suitable for fire equipment.
It's pretty rough.
There's trees rolling over to where you're entirely...
Well, they, I, we talked to Michael, and they did do a bunch of brush clearing, because that was, that was an issue for sure. Yeah, and you might want to, you know, the chief might want to take...
Please get an engine back, you and my vehicle up there. Basically, that's all in fourth train, like, hand tracks going, we have to get in and out. But councilman, that's correct, when they do repairs, they do one side and the other. They just did that recently.
But I thought it was because of the trains coming by, and where they put, that we can't get through there, that we go over 7th and down to get to somebody.
If you could, if you could, but you, I mean, you've got a lot of intersections. You've got 8th Avenue blocking the street up there, where there is no access to any of that when trains come through. I'm just saying, I think he's right. It's going to cost a ton of money to repair that.
Yeah, it's a problem. Unfortunately, and we've got several places where at the bottom of the hill, we've got, we've got storm erosion problems.
And the railroads used to help out with that, but now that they're leaving one lane open when they do repairs, they feel it's a waste of money to put on that road. I mean, city can look at it, but I think they'll be spending a lot of money.
Yeah, at this point, I don't know what...
Because if you haven't seen it, it is very rough.
It's very rough. But why would, why would the railroad not be still responsible? If you're, if there's a hundred-car train going through there, you got, your EMTs are all waiting at the tracks.
Why can't we ask them? Why can't we ask them?
Well, yeah, we can ask them, but, you know, like I said, there's other intersections in town that we have the same problem, because there is no access right to the train coming.
If the primary problem is stormwater runoff, then I understand exactly where you're talking about there in that bend coming down.
That's probably a part of it, Joe, but I mean, you, I haven't been up there a lot, but I don't know how the trees are. There's a lot of trees, branches and...
So they just cleaned up the brush.
Yeah, we cleared it, so...
My question is, isn't this an SD1 issue for stormwater runoff?
It's on Seventh Street. We'll take a look, and I'd just like to look at it and take, you know, come back next month, and we can discuss it. Everybody can take a look at it. I mean, we're discussing something in it.
The answer would be, they won't touch it. Okay.
That work?
Oh, well, we'll see.
I'll see you next month. How's that?
Hey, sounds good.
Anyone else in the audience?
I just got one quick thing, as you mentioned, Michael, the Water District said they'll be out Monday or Tuesday. School's in session on Wednesday, and there are a lot of school buses that run up Dayton Pike and around, and that's going to be a real mess. Nobody's kept in the loop and all that. So if they can do it sooner than later, much better.
Yeah, because they're kind of actually closing that road for a while.
It would have to be closed for at least a day.
Yeah, so Wednesday is the day the buses will run.
Wednesday, next week?
Next week.
Hopefully that works out. They said a day and a half at the most.
Well, good luck.
What do you have on your account?
I'm sorry.
Ten bucks.
I don't think anybody on Dayton Pike has slept very well for the past week or so with those metal panes going over all night.
They should be going.
Just came down earlier.
Anyone, anyone else from the audience? Unfinished business?
I do want to mention one more thing. There's not a planning and zoning meeting tomorrow. The next planning and zoning meeting will be the first Wednesday of September, I believe it's September 2nd. And for anybody that's interested, curious, or wanting to know, latest and greatest on Manhattan Harbor, that will be a major topic of discussion, so FYI. That's at 7:00 on September 2nd, and I'll be right here in this building.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business?
The only thing I have is, each year, usually, all of council and the Department has purchased a program in the all-sports ad for Dayton High School. It runs about $7 a person. So I just want to know if Joey Workman brought me the paperwork to work, and I need to know if everybody wants to do that again.
Yes.
I'll put the ad in, and then everybody will be able to...
Any more new business?
I have an item, sir, that I'd like to discuss. Currently, every month, the council gets a budget report. All it is, is a recap. All things considered, I'd like to formally request that all members of city council also receive a complete ledger of all checks issued in the previous month as part of the city clerk's monthly report. I don't know how many man-hours this would cost, but I think knowing this at the time they're issued would be a real time, could be a real time saver down the road. And I know that the city clerk reports to the mayor and city administrators, so I'd ask if you would allow that.
You're talking about a check register, if you want?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what I, what I would like, though, I would like for council to start receiving a lot of this stuff by email, so that you can basically read it, if you want to read it, and keep it that way, so that we keep printing more documents and more documents. documents. Does anybody in council have any problem with that?
I prefer everything by email.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just thinking at the last day of the month, which in most cases, at the worst, is gonna be the day before the council meeting, when the books are being closed. If we could have that recap, whether it's email, email to us or printed to us, I'd be fine with that, just so we know.
We can send you a check register at the end of the month.
Councilman Lynn and I, since he's in charge of the chairperson of finance...
Right, but this will not be, that won't be bound. I mean, it'll be, your check register is all it's gonna be, because the check statements don't come in till a few days after the month. You'll get just the check register, everything was written for that month.
That's exactly what we need. Thank you, sir.
Any more unfinished, pardon, all right. At this time, we, you want to make a motion to go into executive session?
I would like to make that motion, sir.
I would ask that, remember, Mary, just to go ahead and clarify, before we do go into executive session, we're looking at, because we actually have to go into executive session for under section C, pending litigation. What we have to do, and advise all of you guys, is we'll have to go, if we go into executive session for personnel, we'll have to come out of that executive session and go back in for pending litigation. Can't cross topics in the same, in the same executive session. So that way, it's clear to the public and clear to the record as to what was discussed in the executive session, at least the overview. Now, the details, of course, are still secret. Remember, Mary, I just, you know, want to make sure, and I'm gonna read this to you, that this, this essentially, we're talking about an individual employee where a discussion or hearing in executive session might lead to either an appointment, a discipline, or dismissal of that individual without restrict, and we're not restricting any right of that employee to any kind of public hearing if requested.
Read that again, please.
Essentially, it's a discussion or hearing in executive session, which might lead to an appointment, discipline, or dismissal of that individual, without restricting the employee member, the employee's right to a public hearing if requested.
Then my point would not qualify, so we don't need to go into executive session on that. So I guess we'll discuss it now. Thank you.
Do that.
If I may.
Yeah, do that.
It's recently come to my attention that our Main Street manager has been reassigned to 50% of his time on the Main Street and 50% of his time on code enforcement. Is the payroll also split 50-50 between the departments? Council sets by ordinance, council sets positions and job duties, as well as the budget payroll for each department. My understanding is, we approve the budget for Main Street manager for a full salary. Is half his salary being shifted over to code enforcement?
No. His Main Street, the Main Street job, from the get-go, when they started Main Street, when they made it a full-time job, was 50% Building Department, 50% Main Street. That's always the way it was then. That's the way it was.
Is that in in his job description?
Yeah, I mean, it was part, it was part of that. That's where it came from. It came from 50% from the Building Department and 50%. It actually was to work on code, not so much, you know, a building permit. It's more code enforcement is where it came from. Actually, the Main Street person took care of all the code violations in the Main Street.
And is that what he's limited to, just that?
No, he don't want to do Main Street, so because of the, trying to build Main Street, so, and he's gonna take care of the Main Street, and he's gonna take care of other parts of the city. Because he don't feel...
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, he feels that.
Understood, understood. I'd be in the same position. My concern on this is, we're seeing how the CCAP is starting to pay off. We all reckon getting businesses into the business district, and I don't deny it, we got a lot of code enforcement issues in the city, and we need more resources towards that. I'm just trying to balance, i- is that going to detract? Is that going to impact the success of the Main Street program and the CCAP?
I don't believe it will. And I don't think Anthony believes it will.
Okay.
And neither is Michael. This was the scut before it was just, before we came in and said, it's just the way it's gonna be. We discussed it. Never on, we had a discussion about this when this happened.
Anthony's obviously a very intelligent young man, and what he's done with, with the Main Street program, just in the, in the brief year that he's been with us, has been tremendous, as, as everybody is starting to see, it's paying dividends in the CCAP program that he created. But also, being an asset to the city, we're, we're finding ways that he's gonna be able to get experience in some other sections of local government as well, which will be a benefit to, to us and him, obviously, in the long run as well. So we did, we had this, this discussion very thoroughly and wanted to make sure that he was committed to it as well. You know, if it was something that he didn't want to do or didn't feel up to doing, you know, he and I and the mayor speak very openly and can, we all think this will be a huge benefit and will continue to be an asset to the community. So his Main Street duties are, I don't see being neglected. As you said, the CCAP program will still take up a good majority of his time, but we feel like he can also be an asset in some other areas, too, being, I won't say short-staffed, but being a smaller entity. We have to utilize the talent that we have, and obviously, he's a, has been a great find for the city, and we want to make sure that we can use him to, to our benefit, to his as well.
And Main Street does hurt for him. If he has to put seven hours in one day in Main Street, and we've discussed this, and as long as we get 20 at the end of the week, we're fine.
I just don't want to stop the, slow down the progress.
We don't either, believe me. We got a lot of money invested in this to make this thing work. And, no, we don't want, we don't want it to fall. We want it to be a success. But we also want to utilize him in other areas where, when he has time to do.
Well, thanks for clarifying the decision. That's all I have to say.
I need a motion to go to executive session four.
KRS 61810, section C, pending litigation for or against the city of Dayton.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Gary, second by Bill. On favor?
Aye.
Go on.